Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to a special meeting of the Salisbury City Council on December 21st. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and please join me now in a moment of silent meditation or prayer. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion and a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
A move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson? Ms. Gregory?
Yes, President, if I can make an amendment.
Mr. Boda?
I'd like to make an amendment to remove ordinance number 2636 from the agenda. This is because the city did receive the grant from the state for the Truitt Street purchase.
Very good. Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
Ms. Jackson? Seconded. First, we will vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment eliminating ordinance number 2636 from the agenda, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We will now vote on the motion to adopt the legislative agenda as amended. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The legislative agenda vote is five to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2637 for the second reading.
A move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson? Ms. Blake? Mr. Goldblum? Do you want mute? Mr. Goldblum? We're trying to connect with him. Everybody, please be patient. Any luck in reaching him? Ms. Nichols?
President Heath, we're working on connecting with Julia and Pete either. Is there a backup if we can see if we can get maybe Pete to call in or myself or Julia to read the ordinance stuff? What would be, I'm not exactly sure what would be the next step?
I believe we're supposed to have the solicitor read the
Okay.
Read the ordinance. Sorry for the delay, everybody. Just hang with us.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass along the phone number to him to see if he maybe can call in.
Okay.
I don't believe there's a password to this meeting.
No, there's not.
Okay. I just sent him the caller number, the meeting ID, hopefully he can.
Okay, do you want to call in?
He could probably call, and I just, I just sent Pete a message on here to call. And then I gave him the meeting number. I assume he can hear us talking right now.
Again, I apologize, everybody. Just hang in there for a couple minutes so we can get our attorney on the line. I think
He's gonna call in.
Thank you, Mrs. Nichols. Okay. I think, Mr. Goldblum?
Yeah, we sent a minute.
Everyone hear me now?
Yeah, hey Pete?
Yes, yes, we got you. Alright.
So I just read that whole thing without realizing that I had been disconnected, so I'll start from.
Good practice. Well, that was a good practice, so let's go with the real thing now.
Okay, so this is ordinance 2638. And, no, that's the wrong one.
2637.
2637, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Wycomico County Health Department for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $27,310 and to approve a budget amendment to the FY 2021 grant fund to appropriate these funds for the purchase of a 2020 Subaru Outback. Whereas the Wycomico County Health Department receives a direct allocation of funds through the federal coronavirus relief fund, CRF, and whereas the purpose of the CRF is to help support emergency medical response expenses, including emergency medical transportation related to COVID-19. And whereas the city of Salisbury Fire Department submitted a grant request to the Health Department for funding to assist with the purchase of a 2020 Subaru Outback. And whereas the purchase of this equipment will help serve the citizens of Salisbury and Wycomico Counties through the SWIFT team by providing basic health screening and education to the underserved and vulnerable populations related to COVID-19. And whereas the Health Department has awarded the city funds in the amount of $27,310. And whereas the city must enter into a MOU with the Health Department defining how these funds must be expended. And whereas Section 7-29 of the city charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure that has not been appropriated or authorized by the city council. And whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four fifths of the council. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland that Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Wycomico County Health Department to accept the grant funds in the amount of $27,310. Be it further ordained that the city's fiscal year 2021 grant fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows. Increase Wycomico County Health Department revenue account 10500-47901 by $27,310. And increase the Salisbury Fire Department equipment expense account 10500-577030 by $27,310. Shall take effect upon its final passage. It was first read at a meeting on December 14th, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Goldblum. Mr. Boda, I believe we have an amendment?
Yes, uh, we're gonna make a, I'd like to make a motion to make an amendment to ordinance 2637 to strike line, on line six, to strike FY 2021 and on line 39, to strike fiscal year 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Do we have a second to that motion?
A second.
Ms. Jackson, second. Questions on the, questions on the ordinance number 2637? Mr. Boda?
None.
Ms. Jackson?
None.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Mrs. Gregory?
None.
Hearing no questions, we'll call the amendment on the motion first. All those in favor of the amendment as presented by Mr. Boda, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Vote on the amendment is five to zero. We'll now vote on the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2637 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2637 is passed by a vote of five to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2638 for the second reading.
A move. A move. Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Blake? Mr. Goldblum?
Thank you. Ordinance number 2638, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to authorize the chief police to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the university to accept funding from the governor's office of crime control and prevention in the amount of $100,000 and to approve a budget amendment of the budget to appropriate these grant funds for the purpose of exploring the predictive policing with machine learning project to assist in predicting crime patterns and to ultimately reduce crime in the city of Salisbury. Whereas the governor's office of crime control and prevention has funding available. Whereas the purpose of the grant program is to develop computer software to analyze crime data and predict a recurrence of similar activity based on analytical input sourced from city GIS and Salisbury Police Department. And whereas the city of Salisbury and the University of Maryland were invited by the governor's office of crime control and prevention to participate in this endeavor as a continuation of the MCIN grant project for machine leaning. And whereas the GEO CCP has allocated funds in the amount of $80,000 for the University of Maryland for salary support related to research. Whereas the GEO CCP has allocated funds in the amount of $20,000 for the city of Salisbury for salary support related to administrative and clerical support. Whereas the city of Salisbury must enter into a grant agreement with the University of Maryland dividing how the funds must be expended as well as the sharing of analytical data. And whereas Section 7-29 of the city charter prohibits the city from entering into such contract that requires an expenditure that has not been appropriated or authorized by the city council. And whereas appropriations necessary to do this must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four fifths of the, of the city council. And therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that Mayor Jacob R. Day hereby authorized to accept grant funds in the amount of $100,000 from the governor's office of crime control and prevention and to enter into a grant agreement with the University of Maryland as approved by the city solicitor for the purpose of this grant. Be it further ordained that the city's grant fund budget be and is hereby and hereby is amended as follows. Increase the earned memorial JAG revenue account 10500-423101 by $100,000. Increase SPD overtime expense account 10500-501021 by $20,000. And increase SPD consulting fees expense account 10500-513400 by $80,000. The ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage, and it was first read and considered on December 14th, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Goldblum. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Mrs. Gregory?
None.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2638 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson? I'm sorry, Ms. Jackson, I didn't hear.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2638 is passed by a vote of five to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2641 for the second reading.
A move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake? Mr. Goldblum?
Thank you. This is ordinance number 2641 as amended. An ordinance of the city of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the purpose of accepting additional community development block grant CDBG funds associated with the coronavirus aid relief and economic security, the CARES Act in the amount of $244,747 tied to CDBG-CV3 and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for the projects outlined in the 2020 CDBG action plan, CV3 amendment. Whereas the Maryland State Office of U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, has determined that the city qualifies as an entitlement community. And whereas the city is entitled to receive CDBG funds directly from HUD upon HUD's approval of the city's annual action plan. Whereas HUD has received a direct allocation of funds through the CARES Act, which made available $5 billion in CDBG-CV funds to be awarded by HUD to states and entitlement communities. And whereas the city has been awarded CDBG-CV3 funding in the amount of $244,747. Whereas the city must complete a separate amendment to the 2020 CDBG action plan for each CDBG-CV award amount received. Whereas HUD has issued special regulatory waivers, alternative requirements for these funds to allow expenditure of funds in advance of the final approval action plan amendments when necessary to expedite or facilitate the use of these funds to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. And whereas CV3 2020 action plan amendment is currently underway. Whereas Section 7-29 of the city charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the city council. Where the appropriations must be made on the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four fifths of the council. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, to accept grant funds in the amount of $244,747. Be it further ordained that the city's grant fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows. Increase CDBG revenue account 12800-423300 by $244,747. And increase CDBG operating expense account 12800-546006 by $244,747. The ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage. And there is a blank there, but I believe this was first read on December 14th, 2020.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Goldblum.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance number 2641 as read.
We have a motion by Mr. Boda to amend ordinance number 2641 as read. Do I have a second to that motion?
A second.
Ms. Jackson made a second. We'll vote on the amendment first. All those in favor of the amendment to the motion, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. If you vote on the amendment, it's passed five to zero. We'll now vote on the main motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2641 as read, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2641 for the second reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. That concludes all the items on the agenda for the special meeting. We will now adjourn this meeting, and we will proceed with the regular scheduled work session. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Goldblum.
Thank you.
First up on the agenda tonight is a, an ordinance to accept funds for Santa's workshop. Housing Community Development Director Ron Strickler will walk us through that. Ron, good evening.
Good evening. How y'all doing tonight?
Good. Very good, thank you.
Okay, so ultimately, this has kind of become a yearly thing for us. Our Santa's workshop is held every year in mid-December, and we do solicit funds from area vendors. One of those funds came through the Bless Our Children organization. So we're just asking that we accept the ordinance for the $1,000 in monetary donation that is used to purchase toys to be distributed at Santa's workshop.
Questions from
Ward? I have a question. Where's the, how's the Santa workshop being held this year?
Well, there, there are actually funds appropriate from year to year that carry over. This is almost going to be like a reimbursement to those funds, so normally it's held, it was held over on Church Street at the former HCDD building, at least my recollection of it. And then for the last two years, it was held at the Truitt Street Community Center with the, with the COVID concerns. We made the adjustment for safety of all participants to hold an outdoor drive-through event on Main Street.
Okay, that's right.
For various reasons. One, obviously to drive people of the city downtown to see our beautiful Main Street. And second, that we felt we had a stronger reach for all of Salisbury that way. So that's why we made that decision, and obviously safety was key in that.
Awesome.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Boda? Do you have a questionnaire of comment?
No question, no question or comments, but appreciate the donation.
Ms. Jackson, questions or comments moving forward?
Comments, and I concur with Mear.
Thank you. Ms. Blake, move it forward?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments, moving forward.
Thank you. All right, Ron, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good holiday.
You too.
Next up is an ordinance to accept a grant from MDOT for nail, nailer mill bridge design. Wow. Ms. Pollak?
So this is a grant from the state of Maryland to replace, to do the design to replace the nailer mill bridge. So every year or every other year, we get a report on all the conditions of the bridges in town. And two years ago, the report was alerting us that Nailor Mill is going to be up for replacement soon. Our most recent bridge report was from November of 2019, and that confirmed what improvements need to be made to that bridge. So there is a state highway bridge replacement fund that has an 80/20 split where the state will pay for 80% of the project. And we have a master agreement for federal aid that was signed in February of 2018 that's in your package that enables us to use this, this money for this type of a project. It's actually a really nice program for us because the state handles the design, they hire the vendor, you know, they're really doing all the procurement of this project, and we're overseeing it. Mike Zimmerman's on today. He's the project engineer on our team that's working on it and reviewing the scope of work and working with this vendor. But it, but it is a very convenient program for us. So in addition to getting a grant, they're actually managing the project. So Nailor Mill Bridge is the first one up for replacement. We had budgeted this in to the CIP in the budget last year based on what we thought the grant would be, which at the time was $280,000. Well, since then, State Highway has negotiated specifically the scope of work with their preferred vendor, and the cost came in a little bit higher. That scope is included in your package. So the, the total cost for design is $471,000. So 20% of that is, is our match amount. 80% is the grant amount, which is $377,000. So that is an increase over what we had accepted in the budget, budget ordinance for FY 20. So this ordinance is a budget amendment to accept the additional grant amount and also give us the authority to sign this, this new grant agreement, which is an amendment to the master agreement that's specific for this project. And just as an FYI, the design is slated to take about 12 months. So we would be looking to possibly put the actual construction in FY 23. So we'll, we'll talk about it more in next year's CIP. And we'll get a better cost estimate as they're moving forward with design.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out where this was. I didn't realize that that was a city facility.
Yes, it is. I mean, it's only Yep.
How much of that road is city?
Not much. Nailor Mill goes in city, county, city, county, all along it. We happen to that bridge. So, and then it goes, goes back out on the county on the other side, so.
Yeah, okay.
Move forward to?
I'm moving forward.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
Moving forward.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
Yeah, definitely move it forward.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
Move it forward.
Thank you. So my, it took them till 2019 to figure out that that bridge, that bridge needed to be replaced. I can remember when I worked up towards that end. Wasn't in great shape back then, and that was in the nine, early 90s. So, this is good. This is good news, for sure. So I too want to move it forward. Mrs. Nichols, can we put this on the agenda, please? Well, Amanda, you got the rest of them, so let's, why don't you take us through it?
Thank you. Yeah, so the next four items are all bicycle project related, and so I have Will White, our transportation project specialist, on with me, and he'll, he'll tag team with me on some of these items. But I'll, we'll take them one at a time in the agenda order. So the first one is adopting, well, we adopted the bicycle master plan back in 2016, but we decided to come before you every year within ordinance to actually adjust the, the charter and what, or, excuse me, per the charter, adjust exactly what we would do on each street and tell you what we're doing in that fiscal year and adopt the ordinance to add those bike facilities. So this first one is the list of facilities that we want to add this year, and I'm gonna let Will run down those specific streets.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, Will.
How's everybody doing? So the first streets that we're requesting are all actually based around Northwest Bike Waste Plan. The first phase, which is currently under construction with resurfacing, but no bike facilities. The first phase of which is currently under construction with resurfacing, but no bike facilities have been installed yet. That's Lake Street, Isabella, which encompasses the phase one of that project, which have recently been resurfaced. And then over the next couple, couple coming years will be Delaware Avenue, Cypress Street, West Road, and then West Main Street as it comes up from Fitzwater and then, and cycles around towards the Anticoke Road. Additionally, SU and the, one of the staff members from Salisbury University, Mr. Eric Burkhymers on, if you would like to say a few words as well. But they requested a permission to put on bike facilities on Wayne Street and Power Street on the portions that are still city portions. So they're on here in the list. And while we were working in that area, we also added Avery Street and Milford and improvements to the existing bike facility on Bateman, just general east campus bike network improvements around Salisbury University.
And I, I saw that we had, we've had several communications with the university on this. Would you like to make any comments?
Yeah. Good evening, Ron. Thanks for the time. Certainly appreciate the efforts that the city is putting forth with the Bike Ways Plan. So support it and from a safety perspective for both our students, faculty and staff, as well as community members, we're certainly strong proponents of this. Also from a sustainability standpoint, trying to promote is around campuses is definitely a priority for us. So really appreciate the city taking a lead in this and look forward to continuing discussions for not only these streets, but others in the future. And happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Eric, I'll ask in a second for the rest of the council members. I, I do have one question. Fitzwater Street. Are, do each of those houses on Fitzwater Street have a drive, have their own driveway?
Yeah.
Not every house on Fitzwater has.
Where are those people going to park?
Yeah, they still have on-street parking provided in the Fitzwater Plan.
Oh, so this isn't a ban on total Fitzwater?
No, so this, this is just permission to put on bike lanes in these facilities. On later ordinance where we're requesting remove some parking on Fitzwater is solely against Chesapeake Shipbuilding at their request.
Gotcha. Perfect. Okay. Uh, any other questions, Mr. Boda?
No questions. Moving forward. Sounds good.
Ms. Ms. Jackson?
I have a question about West Road. Because some of that is city and county. So how would you? Put a bike lane, how would it go? How would, how would it be?
So it is, it is city out. Yep, it is city out to Queen Avenue, roughly adjacent to that crosswalk across West Road at West, uh, West Side Elementary. It is city out that far. I guess when we annex South of Rast, we annex down West Road. So it will be a completely owned, or completely city-owned facility out to that point. At which point we will then terminate as it goes into the county. And then that, when they pave their section, they'll be able to tie into it.
So it's annexed as a city. But it's still county.
So all the house, I know it's a, it is a weird one. All the.
It is very weird.
Yeah, we own the.
Actually where my district is, it stopped said, um, now it's funny because I'm at Westport Commons. I skip over Northwest Over Circle, Westover Drive. Then I go to the townhouses on the corner of West Road and Booth Street. None of, none of the left side is mine. And then from there, north of, that's not my district, it's county. So I'm kind of confused.
So, hold on, I can.
Stand the annexation, but it's just confusing. Actually, excuse me, it's confusing to the citizens. Because they don't understand it. You try to explain it, but it doesn't work. So I mean, you know, bike lane, I don't have a problem with it. No, I don't, but I'm, I was just questioning the design, how it would be done. So if you're saying it's going from Isabella straight down.
That is correct. It'll go from the five-point intersection at Isabella Lake and West and up to where we stop at essentially West Side Elementary.
Okay. Would it go on the opposite side? Would one be on the opposite side?
Uh, potentially. So when, when county ties in, when they pave their section of West Road, it's in the bike plan for that, for that to be a bike lane. So they would have to put it in at that point or come forward with a reason why they could not.
So you just have a, a northbound bike trail?
It'll be north and south, but only from up to, up to West Side Elementary. So it'll be tied into the city in both directions, just not.
Okay, okay.
Ms. Blake?
No questions.
Move it forward.
Yes, please.
You didn't ask me to.
I thought you said yes, you're okay with it.
I'm fine, I'm fine.
All right. Mrs. Gregory.
No questions.
Thank you very much. Uh, we will move all these forward then. If you can get these on the agendas, Ms. Nichols will be, will be appreciated. Eric, thank you for coming and staying on tonight and to answer any questions. I think we're, we're good to go.
Great.
Jack is going to hit each of the no parkings individually. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. So, so the first one where we're looking to remove a little bit of parking is on Fitzwater Street associated with the bike lanes. And this is only in front of Chesapeake Shipbuilding, so it's just sixteen spaces. And as Will mentioned, we'll still have on-street parking in front of all the residential properties there. This was a request by Chesapeake Shipbuilding due to safety issues there and, and we do agree that it would be good to have no parking in that area.
I have a question, which is an obvious one. They were complaining about where they're going to park. And now that we're taking parking places away from, at their request, where, where are they going to park?
That's, that's a great question. And actually Will has worked a lot with them to reconfigure that whole entrance. And they will have a lot more space to park on site. Will, if you want to touch on that?
Yeah. So, so they'll grab a couple more spaces by default, just of us reconfiguring the intersection. They also were not including those approximately sixteen spaces in their counts. Because they had actually banned their employees from parking there several years ago. They were just doing it anyway. So they, they weren't including those spaces in any of their parking projections. Various reasons of their driveways are site obstructed by that parking. So it really between that and then somehow, you know, speeding, you know, speeding down through there and just, just close calls with some of their employees. They had about two years ago banned any of their employees from parking on that stretch.
Right, thank you. Good, as long as they're aware of it and their idea is a good one. So, uh, any other questions, Mr. Boda?
No questions.
Ms. Jackson?
I respect that because I live in that area and it is kind of restricted. And when they're getting off work, it is traumatizing trying to get through the area with the employees getting in their vehicles. So I respect that and I appreciate Chesapeake, Chesapeake Shipbuilding doing that and removing those parking spots on that curve. Cause it's like a curve that they're actually parked on, on both sides. So when people are coming home from work, it's kind of hectic. So thank you. Making that decision and thank you, April and Amanda also for working with them.
Angela?
No questions and definitely move it forward.
Yeah, this is Gregory.
No questions. Move it forward.
Okay, I, I agree and move it forward. Next up, we have College Avenue.
So this is an ordinance to remove some parking on West College Avenue on the south side. And this is between Route thirteen and Camden. And this was at a request of Salisbury University. We are currently under design right now for the College Avenue Bike Ways Project. And we received a Maryland Bike Ways Grant for that project. And so Erica is still on the line if we have any questions for him, but the university saw an opportunity there to remove those parking spaces, which will help us considerably in our design of the bike lanes in that area. Uh, Will, anything to add?
So, yeah, SU originally requested the, the removal of the parking. Um, as they were having a lot of issues with, you know, city residents across the street interacting with people in and out of their driveways and, and the sight distances there. It worked out that we were also planning a protected bike lane down there. So it works out to remove them at the same time. It's kind of a joint project. There are two residential spots, permanent spots on the end. We have made contact with the homeowner and are working through her issues of where she's going to park and potentially, you know, giving her better driveway access. So she can pull up into her own driveway, which is actually what she prefers anyway. So we're working those out now. Other than that, we have no, no issues with any of that parking along the front there being removed.
And I should say that's thirty-five parking spaces that we're looking to remove.
Do the students have your phone numbers? They have Eric's.
Yeah, we're, we're prepared for that.
Okay. Uh, questions or comments from anyone, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
This is Gregory.
No questions or comments.
I, I just have one question. A while back, I was, remember I was getting a lot of phone calls about the exit from the parking lot where we had those, you had those cones. And then actually there was almost a bad accident at that spot. And a couple of the people had seen them actually come out and make left-hand turns heading down towards Camden. And then there were some changes made. Has that resolved that issue completely? You know, Eric, I guess you're.
I can, yeah, I can speak to that. It, it has, but it hasn't completely eliminated those. There still occasionally are people who take that illegal left turn coming out of the parking lot. And obviously this project will help eliminate that. So, uh, you know, we've, we've posted signs, there's delineators were placed. You know, where the same thing, Bateman Street on Divisions and Division Street where people will still make that turn. They'll go through all kinds of convolutions to do it. It's just, uh, you know, some people just can't be forced to do it. So this new project will actually help address that even further.
Great. Thank you, Eric. So we'll move that, we'll move that one forward as well. And the last one we have is Power Street.
Okay, so this is also an ordinance to remove parking from Wayne and Power Street. And this was also at a request of Salisbury University to facilitate us putting in bicycle facilities. This totals sixty-eight parking spaces. Most of the properties adjacent to these streets are owned by the university, except for the professional complex and Will has spoken to them. So I'll, I'll let Will speak to that.
I, I spoke with East Professional or, um, excuse me, the Professional Power Street Medical Complex. Dr. Alan Davis is also. So they, they are generally supportive of the plan. They do have concerns over parking on game days, et cetera. Ran some solutions by or working, working with them. It's nothing that we can't handle with enforcement on the university police end and signage. Largely, they're just concerned about park, you know, students and visitors parking in their parking lot on a game day that they're also open. If it's on the weekends, they have zero concerns. Um, so that, that's something that we can, we can handle.
And if I may add, we are working that, there is a vacant lot at the corner of Power and Wayne. That we're, we've been working with our Burn and Gold Club for some time to expand parking there for some of those folks, as well as to obviously increase the visibility around that intersection. So we do have some plans to help address some of the game day parking issues.
Thank you, Eric. Questions or comments from the council, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments. Thank you all for your hard work.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
This is Gregory.
No questions or comments.
All right, well then we'll move that forward as well. Anything else, Mrs. Pollack?
No, that's enough for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pollack, and thank you, Will. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I believe now we are completed the, the agenda. And I would open the floor for council remarks. Mr. Boda?
Hey, just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. I want to recognize Donna Hague and Julie English and, and the whole crew over there who put together those gifts for all the city employees. They, I think they did like over five hundred. Putting them together and a lot of work, a lot of thought and uniqueness went into these gifts that everybody got. So just very grateful for their hard work and thoughtfulness to all the city employees. Uh, since we, you know, this was in place of a Christmas party this year. So, uh, but again, Merry Christmas, everybody. And hopefully we'll see y'all next year sometime after Jack gets his vaccine.
Ms. Jackson?
Um, I'd like to wish everybody in the city of Salisbury.
You're on mute.
You're on mute, April.
You're on mute again. There you go.
I'd like to wish everyone in the city of Salisbury, Wycomico County area and the state of Maryland a Merry Merry Christmas, but be reminded to be safe, mask up, social distance. And as the mayor, I mean, the governor has advised, no more than ten people at your house for the holiday. Please, it's for your good. Have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, April. Angela?
Just, just reiterating, of course, the Merry Christmas, Happy, Best of All Holidays. If you're well enough, please give blood and, you know, shop and eat local. Please, let's help our, our local businesses out.
Thank you, Angela. Michelle?
I just want to remind everybody to that today is winter solstice and from here on out, the days will start to get longer. So this is the darkest day of the year where the light is at the end of the tunnel and coming our way. So you know, please be careful for the holidays if you're gathering. Like, like April pointed out, no more than ten people, but please try to stay home, stay. You know, stay with your home unit and, you know, just please be very careful and wear your mask. Everywhere you go.
Thank you, Michelle. Andy, would you like to say anything?
No. Okay. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Uh, and it's great, again, it's great to be part of this group. I really enjoy these weekly meetings and how we just can enjoy each other's company and constantly moving the ball forward. And, um, you know, we, we think big, we have big dreams, big aspirations, and we work well together to make those things come to fruition. So glad to be part of the team. It's really been humbling and honoring the last three and a half years. So thanks for doing what you guys do.
Thank you, Andy. Julia?
I echo Andy's sentiments and everything that was already said. And the only thing I'd add is, you know, it's been an incredibly challenging year. So I hope you all are able to get some time to relax and recharge. And I encourage you to check on those around you and just do a little, a little mental health check-in, uh, because there are a lot of folks struggling out there.
Thank you, Julia. Appreciate it. I too would like to wish everybody the happiest of holidays, whichever you celebrate. Please be careful, wear your masks. There will have many more Christmases. We'll have many more Thanksgivings. We'll have many more holidays to celebrate together. But right now, uh, we need to focus on taking care of each other by making sure that we wear our masks and we separate. So with that, God bless everybody. Have a great, look forward to a great new year. We do not have a meeting next week. I'll just remind everybody. So enjoy that and Happy New Year as well. God bless everybody. Good night. Meeting is adjourned.